Okay, it's six o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order. And I will begin with the invocation. May we who are merely in convenience to remember those who lives are at stake. May we who have no risk factors, remember those most vulnerable. May we who have the luxury of working from home, remember those who must choose between preserving their health and making their rent. May we who have the flexibility to care for our children when their schools close, remember those who have no options. May we who have to cancel our trips, remember those who have no safe place to go. May we who are losing our margin money in this torment of economic market, remember those who have no margin at all. May we who settle in for a quarantine at home, remember those who have no home. As uncertainty grips our country, let us choose love. And during this time, when we may not be able to physically wrap our arms around each other, let us yet find ways to be the loving embrace of God to our neighbors. Amen.
Amen.
We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam State Clerk, did we have any citizens who had requested a speech at the council this evening?
We do not.
Okay.
We'll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Dordie.
Here.
DeLucy.
Here.
Roberson.
Here.
Dan Camp.
Here.
Mayor Weir.
Here.
Okay, there are no citizens' requests to speak tonight. If there's no objection from the council, before we get into our regular agenda, I would like to ask the city manager to please provide the council and the citizens with an update on the health impacts we're seeing from the coronavirus, the PSN information, and the financial impacts at this time. So is there any objection to suspending our rolls order and letting the same manager give a brief presentation?
None here.
Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. As the mayor said, I'll just give you guys a quick update on what we know tonight about the COVID-19 situation, and then a little bit about what that's doing to our budget position right now. With regard to the virus, as of just a few hours ago, we had approximately 5,800 confirmed cases in the state of Missouri. Two hundred and seventy of those were in Jackson County, and about seventy of those we know to be in Independence. And by the way, last week, the Jackson County Health Department did begin making data available to the public on its website regarding cases within Independence. So if our citizens would like to go out and look at the Jackson County Health Department's website, they can see that information there. There is some good news. It does appear in the current modeling that the curve is beginning to flatten, and we may begin to pass the peak. The models do show that with regard to our hospitals, that they are no longer forecast to have a shortage of beds or medical equipment that would be vital to treating cases in our area. As that said, those models are based on the assumption that strict social distancing makes things easier. And to that end, at the advice of our regional health directors, including our own health director Christina Hyman, the Jackson County State Home Order has been extended through May the fifteenth. And that May the fifteenth date, you know, not only ensures that we get past the fourteen day incubation period that seems common with this virus, but it also gives our public health officials additional time to get further testing and contact tracing measures in place, which will be vital to helping ensure that we don't get another spike of this later in the fall or into the winter. We are, as I said, doing the extension through the fifteenth to the important public health consideration, but that certainly is going to have an impact on our city finances. When I presented to you two weeks ago, we laid out three different scenarios of the different recovery options. It is now looking like that third scenario, which was the more bleak of the pictures, is becoming more of the reality. That would assume that this begins to wrap up in the summer, and that recovery really begins in the fall. We really base that off the fact that knowing that we'll be through this stay-at-home order through at least the fifteenth of May, restaurants, businesses, et cetera, are going to continue to either be greatly restricted in their service or temporarily closed. Nationwide, sixty percent of the space that is classified as retail is currently dormant. Retail stores nationwide are suffering, assuming that from all municipalities and all state governments of all sizes. So it's not just an independent issue happening across our country. What that means for us, and if we're going to kind of base this off of that third and more aggressive assumption, for the remainder of this fiscal year, we would be estimating a loss to the general fund of about $4.3 million, and an additional $2 million into next fiscal year. So about $6.3, $6.4 million in the general fund, and then citywide total, including the general fund, about an $11 million loss. So the sales taxes, of course, as their sole source of revenue, the transient guest tax, all of those we see taking a hit because of this event. So we are working through a budget scenario now to try to get a submitted balanced budget to the council on May eleventh. That is our obligation under the charter. That will contemplate how to address that $11 million shortfall. We're working on appropriate cuts to the general fund. You know, that would strike a balance, but certainly there's not going to be a way to do this without cutting the budget. We'll use a combination of our existing fund balance, and right now we are tentatively planning on drawing down $2 million of the loan that was approved by the council. And then this budget would also have the first repayment toward that loan. Our objective is to get that repaid in no more than five years, which means we would need to pay about $450,000 annually to repay that $2 million. If the bottom doesn't drop out any further than that, it would be our hope that we would not need to draw down any more than the $2 million. But as we always say, a budget's just a plan, and this is our best-case scenario that we have right now. So I hope that gives you a little bit of a flavor, and Mayor and Council happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, may I ask everybody, I'm getting some reports that there's a lot of distortion on the broadcast. So if you're not speaking, if you could mute your microphone, and that would help with that situation. Are there any specific questions for the same manager regarding his report on the COVID-19 situation? Okay, thank you. We will move on with our agenda. Our first item, there is no consent agenda this evening, so we will move on to our public hearings. The first is a public hearing for the application by Jacob Holman requesting a rezoning from C-2 General Commercial to R-2 Single Family Residential Large Lot for the property located at 3400 South Arty Mize Road. This is new information only. Mr. Skinnell.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. This rezoning on Arty Mize Road was considered by the Planning Commission on March twenty-fourth. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning, and there is no new information to report on this case.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number twenty dash zero two four, ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-2 General Commercial to District R-2 Single Family Residential Large Lot for the property located at 3400 South Arty Mize Road in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Sorry, yes.
Dordie.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Roberson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes, ordinance passes. Our next public hearing is for the application by Jason Scott requesting a special use permit to operate a body art shop business at 3501 North, I'm sorry, 3501 South Sterling Suite C. This is new information only. Mr. Skinnell.
Yes, this special use permit for the body art service on Sterling Road was considered by the Planning Commission on March twenty-fourth. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this application, and there's no new information to report on this case.
Okay, is there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number twenty dash zero two six, an ordinance, oh, excuse me, twenty dash zero two five, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a body art service at 3501 South Sterling Avenue, Suite C, in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Dordie.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Roberson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes, ordinance passes. Our next public hearing is for the application by M&amp;M Express requesting a special use permit to operate a car wash at 18819 East Thirty-Ninth Street. This is new information only. Mr. Skinnell.
Yes, this special use permit for a new car wash on Thirty-Ninth Street was considered by the Planning Commission on March twenty-fourth. The Plan Commission recommended approval of this application, and there is no new information to report on this case.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? The public hearing is closed. Madam State Clerk.
Bill number twenty dash zero two six, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a car wash at 18819 East Thirty-Ninth Street in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Dordie.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Roberson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes, ordinance passes. Our next public hearing is for the application received from Family Dollar Stores of Missouri LLC, number 28806, for an unlimited beer, malt liquor, and wine by the package with Sunday sales for Family Dollar Store located at 9120 East Thirty-Fifth Street South. This is a full public hearing. Mr. Skinnell.
Yes, Family Dollar seeks this packaged liquor license for their store located on Thirty-Fifth Street. This is a new license, as they have not had a liquor license in the past. We have not received any citizens in opposition to this request, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, this is a full public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in support of this application?
Yes. I am, I am.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I go ahead? So I am, I'm opposed. Do you want me to speak or to wait?
Just a moment. Is there anybody wishing to speak in support? Okay, then we will listen to the testimony and opposition. Go ahead.
Send in a letter.
Okay, my apologies. I am Joyce Constance White, and I live at 1024 South Forest Avenue in Independence. Our property is directly behind the Family Dollar and the Dollar Tree and the Plasma Place. So our property butts right up against this business. I did send in a letter this week that all the council people, and I believe Mayor Weir, that you all received. So in respect of that, that letter basically expressed that between the area of Chrisler and Sterling Avenue, there are five businesses already that sell liquor, alcohol, beer. You have the CVS store, you have the Price Chopper. You, we have two bars directly across the street from the Plasma Place where the Plaza is. So let alone you've got two liquor establishments there. If the Family Dollar was also selling, then you have three right there in that proximity. The Walgreens at Twenty-Third and Sterling also sells liquor, beer, wine. If you go just a little bit west of Sterling, you have the Philip Sixty-Six Station that also sells liquor, beer, and wine. So that in, in all proximity is within a mile radius. I am, we are greatly opposed to this. We spend a lot of time picking up trash on our property and picking up trash along Turner that runs along the railroad tracks. Many times this is beer cans. It is the small little plastic liquor bottles, just regular-sized liquor bottles that people throw in the yard or throw in the bushes. Be one way to, to help keep the neighborhood clean. The other prospect is that Chrisler Baseball Stadium is there at Chrisler and Twenty-Third Street. The gas station there that's Philip Sixty-Six on the corner of Chrisler and Twenty-Third in the past has asked for a liquor license, and I have been there to speak against there, against that at the council meetings. So I now know that that's being turned into a Valero, so I want to closely watch that. We have many families and baseball teams and leagues that play at Chrisler Stadium, particularly during spring and summer months. The high school teams also play there from Van Horn, Christmas, and Truman. In respect of that, we also have Proctor Elementary School that is in proximity, and we have Santa Fe Elementary School. So thinking of our neighborhood, thinking of our residents, thinking of the number of establishments that already have a liquor license to sell unlimited beer, liquor, and wine. We are greatly opposed to this just because of the close proximity that we already have within the mile radius, and I greatly ask that, that all of you would please vote no.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Perkins.
Madam Mayor, just for a point of clarification, the, the item that Mrs. White is discussing is actually the next one off of Twenty-Third Street. The one that we're discussing now is, is the one off of Thirty-Fifth Street. But in both cases, I am against, I'll put that on the record now. But for the one that is now being spoken to is the one on Twenty-Third Street.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Roberson.
I was going to mention that as well. Thanks, John. My question about this particular Family Dollar store at Thirty-Fifth and Forty Highway. I'm wondering about some of the schools. I'm not sure how close, the closest elementary school is. Know there's some schools north of there, maybe within a mile. But I know there's also a, a parochial school not far from there, just up, up the road. And do you know how far that is up Forty Highway, Mayor? I'm talking.
Nativity. Yeah, it's, it's fairly close. I don't know, Mr. Skinnell, you probably, because this does require a two-thirds majority vote due to residential property within three hundred feet. But there is the Nativity of Mary's School, which can't be more than a half mile or so, would you say, Mr. Skinnell?
Yes, I would guess that it's about, it's about a half mile away. The new Cassell Park is probably about less than a mile away.
My, my other concern, Mayor, is that this area, especially down toward I-70, and that interchange has had a lot of homeless. And I don't want this to be a magnet for homeless going in to buy liquor. I know there's other places along here. In fact, I was going to ask Mr. Skinnell how many other liquor stores are close to Thirty-Fifth and Forty. I have no idea, but he may. But, but I'm, I'm concerned about the accessibility for the homeless. I want them to have access to food and to supplies, but I'm not sure about alcohol. So, Mr. Skinnell, do you have any idea how many are close by?
Yeah, so within three hundred feet, there is one bar which has a liquor license. And outside of that, three hundred feet, but within the fifteen hundred feet, there appears to be about five to six other establishments that sell liquor.
I knew there was a quick trip not far from there as well, and I figured they did as well, so thanks.
Are there any more comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Okay, and I'm sorry, was there anybody else who wishes to speak either in support or opposition? Okay, then the public hearing is closed. Madam State Clerk.
Council action is requested on the application received from Family Dollar Stores of Missouri LLC, number 28806, for an unlimited beer, malt liquor, and wine by the package with Sunday sales for Family Dollar Store located at 9120 East Thirty-Fifth Street South.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this bill? I will say, somebody who lives very close to this location, it's been a great addition to our neighborhood to have this Family Dollar. We have, now we have the Aldi that is under construction that's nearby as well, but there's very few places for people in the neighborhood to go and get, you know, some basic groceries and supplies. So they've been a great neighbor in addition to the neighborhood. I am not going to support this application for their liquor permit, but I'm certainly very happy to have their business in, in the neighborhood, and it's been, it's, it's really been a blessing to the people who live in this neighborhood. Are there any other comments or questions on this bill? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
No.
Perkins.
No.
Dordie.
No.
DeLucy.
No.
Roberson.
No.
Dan Camp.
No.
Mayor Weir.
No, ordinance fails. Our next public hearing is for the application received from Family Dollar Stores Missouri LLC, number 21942, for an unlimited beer, malt liquor, and wine by the package with Sunday sales for a Family Dollar Store located at 11714 East Twenty-Third Street South. This is a full public hearing. This is the location that Mrs. White just spoke about. Mr. Skinnell, is there anything to add?
Yeah, so this Family Dollar is, is located in the Alton Plaza. They are seeking a liquor license with Sunday sales. This would be a new liquor license at this location. We have received three citizens in, in opposition to this request. We have attached those to the, to the item cover sheet. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, this is a full public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in support of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Are there any comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Madam State Clerk.
Council action is requested on the application received from Family Dollar Stores of Missouri LLC, number 21942, for an unlimited beer, malt liquor, and wine by the package with Sunday sales for Family Dollar Store located at 11714 East Twenty-Third Street South.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
No.
Perkins.
No.
Dordie.
No.
No.
DeLucy.
No.
Roberson.
No.
Dan Camp.
No.
Mayor Weir.
No, ordinance fails. Our final public hearing is for the application received from Vasco Events LLC, DBA, The Farmhouse KC Event Venue, for a tavern intoxicating liquor license with Sunday sales located at 17221 East Thirty-second Street South. This is a full public hearing. Mr. Skinnell.
Yes, Mayor, Vasco Events seeks a liquor license with Sunday sales for their new facility that is under construction in the vicinity of Thirty-second and Two-Ninety-One. This is an event space where they would have weddings and other gatherings there. This application does need two-thirds majority vote of the city council due to the proximity to Van Hook Park. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Okay, this is a full public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in support of this application? Anybody, okay, why, why do the, the public hearing, Councilman, anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, Councilman Roberson.
I did go back and speak with the owner's father, who is the contractor and built the space. It's back behind my office building. Back behind my building is a, is Powell Architects and engineers, and behind them is Brown Accounting, and behind them is this farmhouse venue. And it's, it's lovely. I mean, it's absolutely wonderful inside, and they're planning to have things like weddings, primarily weddings and wedding receptions. And they remodeled that little stone house that was falling apart back there, and that's going to be a part of the venue with a, a place for, for the wedding party to change, I guess. And, and they're going to have an outdoor garden back there. It's just, it's very nice. They have invested a lot in this, and I, it's not for selling liquor. They're just going to be serving it at their events, is what I understand, so.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments, more comments or questions from the council on the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Madam State Clerk.
Council action is requested on the application received from Vasco's Events LLC, DBA, The Farmhouse KC Event Venue, for a tavern intoxicating liquor license with Sunday sales located at 17221 East Thirty-second Street South.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Dordie.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Roberson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordinance passes. We have two non-ordinance action items this morning. Madam City Clerk.
Assign Goldman Sachs and Company LLC as underwriter in order to refund debt associated with the Cracker Nut Tax Increment Finance District and authorize the city manager to enter into an underwriter agreement.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Dordie.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Roberson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes, ordinance passes. Oh, I'm sorry, act, item passes. Madam State Clerk.
Authorize Director of Finance and Administration to enter into an agreement with Ruben Brown for compilation and initial assessment of Cracker Nut Creek Transportation Development District.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Dordie.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Roberson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes, item passes. This takes us to our second readings. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number twenty dash zero two seven, an ordinance authorizing execution of a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Mo Route 12 Truman Road Resurfacing Public Improvements Project. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Dordie.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Roberson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes, ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty dash zero two eight, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Terry Snelly Construction for the Waterfall Park Spillway Repair Project, number. Snelling Construction for the Waterfall Park Spillway Repair Project, number seven zero one three one seven zero three, for an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. Authorizing future minor change orders for an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand three hundred eleven dollars and sixty cents and/or time extensions and increasing appropriations. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, was reading this, this, uh, Armor Flex. Have we done any research, uh, to see if there's a product failure out there, or is this bad workmanship? When this was built, it sure didn't last very long, um, or what it is. Um, I just wondered, you know, like siding on a house and stuff, they go thirty, forty years on some of this stuff. I didn't know if, if there's been any lawsuits against this Armor Flex, or if it was actually, uh, a, a bad workmanship, or, I, I don't know, just trying to fill things out there.
Yeah, yeah, uh, Councilmember Huff and members of the council, uh, by anyone's definition, I don't think that this, uh, public improvement lasted as long as it should have. Um, that said, the city at the time did accept the work and accepted the public improvement, so, uh, therefore we come responsible for, uh, maintaining the asset. Um, I'm not aware offhand of any litigation. I, but I confess I haven't done a lot of research about, um, the, the, the company itself, um, but, um, it's one of those where we've inherited the problem, certainly.
Okay, no problem.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, did you have a question? Robertson.
Yes, just to follow up with Councilmember Huff, will this work have some sort of a, a warranty?
Yeah. You know, I'll go ahead and ask Tim Gramling if he'll jump in and, and answer that for you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, hope you can hear me this time.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, this, our, our normal, on, on all of our construction projects, we have a two-year maintenance warranty that goes along with that, so this will be under warranty. Uh, the original improvements actually weren't contracted by the city. It was actually contracted by the developers, so, uh, we just accepted it after it was built.
Any further questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Doherty.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes, ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty dash zero two nine, an ordinance vacating an existing sanitary sewer easement located at two zero nine zero zero East Bunshu Road. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Doherty.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes, ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty dash zero three zero, an ordinance amending ordinance number one nine zero zero five by adding the acquisition of easements on four new parcels related to the College Street Improvements Phase One, project number seven zero one 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 eight zero five, in order to acquire general utility easements for the project. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Doherty.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Robertson.
Yes.
Dan Camp.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes. Ordinance passes. This concludes our regular agenda for this evening, um, and brings us to Councilmember comments. I will begin with Councilmember Doherty.
Nothing this, this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Perkins.
Keep plugging along, one day at a time. Be safe. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Huff.
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember DeLucy.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Just wanted to say I'm thankful for, uh, all the, all the workers that are still working at the hospitals and the, uh, the primary care folks. Um, our thoughts and prayers are with people that are going through the illness and, uh, and for those that are treating them and caring for them. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Van Camp.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to give a heads up to everybody, a warm, you know, everybody who's working out there, but we went through a portion of this, and everybody's situation is different, and how you handle it. If you are able, please, please double down on your efforts so that we come out of this sooner and more healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Mr. City Manager, as we've been conducting our meeting, I got an alert on Twitter, um, that Jackson County has reached an agreement with the city of Kansas City to open up the Three Trails Camp, Salvation Army Camp, as temporary emergency housing for COVID-nineteen positive residents. Um, this is located, obviously, in Kansas City, but is at Forty Highway and Lee Summit Road, um, which is really in the heart of Independence in, in some senses. Um, I was not aware that this was, I, I was, we were made aware that this was something that was being contemplated, but I was not aware that this was coming to, um, the Jackson County Legislature for a decision. Can you tell me if there was any consultation or notification with the city of Independence on this decision?
Not on the final decision. As you said a few weeks ago, we were told that they were looking for sheltering for homeless individuals who were suffering from COVID, uh, but no, this is the first I'm hearing of this final decision being made.
Thank you. Um, let's make sure that, um, tomorrow when we have our call with the county that we get some more information regarding this. This is going to be something, um, that our citizens are going to want, uh, considerable amount of information about how this, um, facility is going to be used. Um, so we will make sure to put that on our agenda for our call with the county tomorrow. Um, I just again want to say, um, how proud I am of our community, that this has been a very challenging time, one full of many, many sacrifices, and, um, the reaction from our community, I have to say, has been overwhelmingly positive and supportive and caring for one another. I know that we are a city that is resilient and, um, we will find a way to come out of this, um, this terrible hardship that so many people are going through. Um, and I assure everybody that we are working together, the, the city staff, the council across our region, to try to safely return to business as soon as possible, and, um, doubling down, as Councilman Van Camp said, on those efforts. Um, so again, just my sincere gratitude to everybody on our city staff who is really taking the lead in enforcement of the Jackson County orders in our city, um, our police officers, our firefighters who are on the front line, certainly our healthcare workers in the private sector. Um, it's, you know, been a tremendous collaborative effort, and as the city manager has reported, while our finances are suffering, our, um, outcome, health outcomes are much, much better than we fear they could have been to this point. So that's something to be grateful for. Uh, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything else this evening?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned.